Hi everyone, this is Nitika from the Healing Da Foundation. I welcome you all to this Mother's Day special webinar. That is hosted by the Healing Da Foundation in collaboration with the HR Support Foundation. Before we begin with this very exciting and very thrilling webinar, I would like to wish all the mothers out there a very, very happy Mother's Day. Today is 9th May, today is when we celebrate all our birthgivers or all our caregivers, those who have nurtured us, nourished us and raised us for the amazing human beings that we all are today. Today's webinar is very, very special because we are going to be talking to some of the most celebrated brave-hearted and courageous rainbow parents. These are parents who support the LGBTQIA+ communities. Their own children have come out as active members of the LGBTQIA+. Together, these women have formed a very cohesive and a very supportive organization called SWIKAR, which is also known as the Rainbow Parents Group, which is a support group for parents of the LGBTQIA+ children, formed with an aim of supporting one another to wholly accept their children and be an active ally. Without further ado, I would like to introduce our panel for today. The first panelist is Mrs. Aruna Desai. She is an HR manager by profession and the co-founder of SWIKAR. Hello, Aruna ma'am, so nice to see you and meet you here. Up next, we have Mrs. Padma Aya. Mrs. Padma Aya is the co-founder of SWIKAR along with Aruna ma'am. And she is the mother of celebrated equal rights activist Mr. Harish Aya. And last but not the least, we have Mrs. Lovina Rangel with us, who is the founder of the Curvy Yuki and also a member of SWIKAR. I am so thrilled to welcome you all to the panel here and I'm very, very thankful to each one of you for making some time out of your busy schedules on a Sunday that day and joining us for the panel.
Such a pleasure to be here, Nitika.
It's a pleasure.
Right, we've got some very amazing audience here with us from different walks of life. So I would definitely request audiences to post their comments, to like and share as much as possible and we will be having a Q and A round probably towards the end of the session where you can definitely get your answers, the panelists can answer your questions towards the end, in the last 10 minutes or so. So my first question I think will be on behalf of the audience because a lot of audiences very curious to know what SWIKAR stands for. You know, I've already given an introduction about SWIKAR but I think the audience is very, very eager to know it from you guys because you all are the founding mothers of the organization. I'm gonna say founding mothers and not founding fathers because we've got a strong league of women who have founded the organization. So would any of you like to give us a sneak peek into what SWIKAR stands for and what you guys do?
Should I go?
Of course.
So SWIKAR itself, the meaning of SWIKAR is acceptance, did you know? So you know, am I audible?
Yes.
So you know, there was a discussion going on between because we were there since many years, like since 2007. We were, three, four parents were already, you know, out and proud parents who had accepted their children and also talking to, talking to media and you know, we were speaking publicly. So you know, and then we were, because we had already accepted our children and we were, we were speaking to other parents and helping other children to come out to their parents. So since we were already doing so many years, so we were in the discussion of starting like kind of group, you know, because we never had this kind of group where parents support each other. So when there was Sridhar Rangan's Evening Shadows film, discussion was going on. That time, Sridhar Rangan had decided to have, because we were there, few parents were already there but we should have formally group. So he, he thought of from the crowdfunding, raise money, he wanted to have parent support group. So that is how, and then he, he had kept some amount, you know, to form the group, to have meetings and all, you know. So that is how this group initiative started. And then we started with 10 parents, we were there, few parents and then we, by the time we had first workshop, we were there, 10 parents, 10 families were there and then now we have more than 100 parents in our group, you know. And this is, it's been now for, from the group we started, it's been more than three, I'm saying three and a half years. It's, we are in fourth year now. So it's, it's an amazing, amazing journey and all the parents are accepting parents in our group. So this is how the group started and you know, the, I want to say that, you know, the aim, the purpose of our group is, you know, to build a more equal and safe world for LGBTQIA+ children's, I mean parents, you know, by strengthening, strengthening acceptance in all spaces, you know, with primary focus on homes. That is the purpose of having this group. And then, so and then you know, we have like, we want to create safe space for parents of LGBTQ. Then we discuss in our group, we discuss our anxieties, fears, you know, whoever, because you know, many few, many parents when they are new, you know, they have doubts, questions and all. So you know, we, we discuss those, you know, in our group and we want to facilitate peer-to-peer sharing, you know. We like sometimes, you know, when the parent join our group, they will be speaking either on the group or they will be speaking directly, you know, it's a WhatsApp group, you know. So we speak, we speak directly to, you know, parent calling over the phone and all. So and then we, we have given external training, you know, through Hamsa for Trust. It's a, there was a project called Prabhal, you know, Prabhal means, you know, the strength, you know. So to give strength to parents, we had those, and this was decided in the, on the 17th February 2017 that we will have this kind of training, you know, for all the parents so that, you know, they, because many parents do not know. Many parents, see like for example, my child, if he's gay, so I will know only about gay, you know, because, because since he's there, gay. So he will be speaking to me about gay, so other, I mean, I will not know other, other definitions, you know. So that, that is the reason, you know, we wanted to have workshops and then to like, in the workshop, you know, we had self-care, then we had invited lawyers. So you know, about laws, myths, to remove all those myths and misconceptions. So many topics were there for the training, you know, so we had those, you know. And then, you know, most importantly, what we do is, you know, we have our stories, you know, we share our stories. So those stories really help other parents to accept their own children. So these are the things we do in the SWIKAR, for example.
Right.
Padma, if you want to add something, you can add. Nitika, you can ask next question.
Aruna ji, then maybe I'll add something when, if we are quiet with it. Padma, are you, can you speak up to me, are you?
Because I told Padma to speak up.
Yes, yes, okay, but I think she can hear us now.
Okay.
Yeah, Padma, you're on mute. Can't hear you, Padma. No. No.
Okay, you can, Lovina, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add, you know, for those of us, in addition to what Aruna was just saying, that the group acts as a support system for the parents, you know. Not just to see, we all come together to support our children and then for the larger community, but the group also acts as a space for us to hold space for each other and, you know, to actually help and support nurture each other as parents with our own doubts, with our own fears. So it's a, when we talking about mental health, then it's not just for the acceptance of our children but also as peers to hold space for each other and nurture each other and each other's mental health as well and questions. So it all comes together in that space of emotional well-being.
Think Nitika is just back on?
Yeah, sorry, there was a network glitch from my end. I hope everyone can hear me and see me now.
Yes, you might just want to move your camera a little down because we can't see your face, okay.
Right, so thank you so much for that introduction about SWIKAR. My next question would be about, probably a more generic question about the community and what has been the interaction between parents and children, you know, now that you all are working with SWIKAR and you all have so much of experience, decades of experience working with parents and children. What do you think has been the change or the rate of acceptance compared to maybe 10 or 20 years ago? How are things now, how are interactions now between or relationships between parents and their children from within the community? When it comes to children being more comfortable coming out and what has been the response in your experience?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Yes, Padma ma'am, we can hear you.
Yeah, say about, I am in the community for the past two decades, or six, maybe not exactly two decades, say something between 60, 70 years. And I can find lot of change, when I came out, there was any parent with me, along with me, except Aruna and Chitra and Q1. I never had anybody to talk back on, you know, and talk everything. And even during that time, killing so many children and with the extra parents, you know, there were father who listened to me completely and he said, no, but my son is not exposed and he cannot be gay. Then back the phone, things like that used to happen but now it is at least they give an ear to us, you know. They listen to what we say, so that is keep the change. And children are coming out to their parents and parents are also listening to us, so that is happening. And that could be due to so much of error being created and even in newspapers and media and newspapers. We do find, every day you find an article on the newspaper or, so these things are changing for the better of people.
I want to say that, yeah, so I, what I want to say that key, yes, in the beginning like, you know, there were very few parents were coming out, I mean, children were coming out to the parents and parents were like sometime accepting, sometimes not, you know, sometimes they used to say that, okay, we have accepted you but you don't come out to, I mean, you don't be in the public, you don't tell people, you know. And parents also are not comfortable in talking to, you know, their extended family and all that. So this was there, like, you know, in the beginning when we were doing all the counseling and all. And you know, even when we were walking in the pride, you know. So children also, forget the parents, when children also now, they used to wear the mask, you know, on the face and they never used to show their faces, you know. They wanted to be there in the pride but they never used to show the face because that stigma was there and most importantly, because there was section 377, you know. So that's why children also were hiding their faces. But after that 6th September 2018, the scenario changed, you know. After that, when that, the first ride after that, what happened was, you know, many children were not wearing mask. You know, very few you could see that with the mask and painting and all, you know. They were openly like, you know, because they, they were not scared of, you know. Even if, even if their parents see, because many, many children's parents saw their photos, photographs in the newspaper next day, you know, and that is how their families came to know that, oh, their own child is from the community. And they wanted that to happen, you know, they wanted that to happen, you know, parents to show, see that and, you know. So since, what I want to say, since 2018, more and more children are coming out and they are actually, you know, they are, they, many children are actually planning and coming out but they want to come out. And recently though, I have seen, since lockdown, since 2020, even the very young, you know, teenagers want to come out to their parents and, you know, and they, they are in a hurry so much, you know, that they want to tell their parents. So the, yes, and then acceptance, so you know that how it is, like when we sensitize parents, you know, the parents accept it. So there is a difference, was different from then till now.
Lovina, I want to add something.
I just wanted to add that, you know, to actually what you said. I, I as a parent have found that there are many more children, many more teens who are actually coming out. Sometimes I don't, not, not my children alone, you know, but other people's, other children who somehow find that safe space because not all adults, not everyone's parents are very accepting. So they, they need to find that safe adult to whom they can actually share and open, openly express themselves or even, you know, just to know that there's an adult who can hear you out and with whom, you know, it's safe to disclose certain things, sometimes it's fears, sometimes it is just, just an emotional outburst or a venting. But sometimes there are real issues that matter, you know, physical, physiological, mental health issues. And, and actually I was surprised during the lockdown that I heard of so many young teenagers, you know, sometimes even pre-teens for that matter, who, even if they are exploring, even if they are just curious, even if they don't really know and they are questioning, even that should be accepted instead of shut down. And I see so many children, you know, because of the news, because of, because of media, because they see other people from the community, other members of the community who are openly accepting themselves, when they see, you know, the normalization of other families, then there is that desire to have that for ourselves and both for children and for parents, it's so important to see that. I observe more of, you know, the expression but more from the community members themselves, more from the children and lesser from the parents. And I think that's where, and my personal hope is that, you know, I would see, I'd like to see more parents out there who actively and openly, very courageously support their family members, support their children in this process.
Right. So I, I probably just, you know, with this conversation, I would like to probably just ask out of curiosity that what, when you're, when you're conducting these group sessions, you know, when you're like talking to so many parents, what are the challenges that you think parents are facing when they're interacting with their children? And what do you think can parents do to make their children feel more emotionally supported? At the time when they are, you know, probably when, probably they, they may not be accepted by the world around them, they are finding it difficult to accept themselves. So what do you think are the, are the advisors that you give to parents who are looking to support? And what challenges do you think they are facing when they are interacting and, you know, dealing with their child's identities after the revelation?
Can I go? Padma, you want to say?
Aruna, go ahead.
So, yeah, my advice to parents is, you know, most importantly, your, your acceptance and support is really vital for your child, you know. Because if they are, if they are confused about or coming, because, you know, they, most of the time, you know, children themselves are confused about their own sexual orientation and gender identity, you know. So because of, mostly because of fear of negative judgment, you know, negative judgment from and rejection from their own parents, you know. So that is why, you know, what parents should be doing, you know, because you know, the, and towards LGBTQ community now, they don't look at them as a, you know, with a dignity anyways, you know. So that's why, you know, parent support is most important, you know. Because most of the time, you know, child is questioning their own gender identity, you know. And, yeah, and they, you know, it's a process because earlier channel, earlier panel, we had one parent whose child was born as male child and then, then he came out as gay and then she came out as trans woman. So it's a process, you know, because you know, for child himself was a, was a journey, you know. So that is, that is when, you know, their parent support is important and that mother, you know, she accepted as, she accepted as, I mean, when he was born as a son, then, you know, then gay, then trans woman, so that's the thing, you know. So that's why, you know, this process is, during this process, if parent support is there, then you know, the, the journey of their coming out, you know, discovery, you know, you can say that discovery of their own expression becomes easy, you know. So, and you know, most important is, when your child comes out, the communication is most important. You know, you have, you communicate with your own child. Don't react immediately when your child says, you know, because most, it's like, you know, we for so many years, we have, we have seen that we as only heterosexual, you know. And we, most of the parents have expected their children as heterosexual only. And when like whatever age, maybe 15, 20, whatever age they come out to their parents, you know. So for parents, you know, it is so many years, they knew that their child is heterosexual only and now suddenly when they say that they are from the community, parents must understand that, you know, for example, I am heterosexual woman, you know, cisgender woman. I will never ever think also or expect that me being from the community, you know. So that same way, if your child, if your child is from the community, they can never even think that they are heterosexual, you know. So when your child says that, even though for so many years living with you, you know, heterosexual parent, still you are, if your child says that they are from the community, that means they, they can mean, they know what they are saying. So don't immediately react to it, you know, we, no, 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 this, you know, many parents are not ready to even listen, you know, that can never happen, how can it be that, you know, there was, there is no one in our family born like this before this, how can you be, you, you are like this, we are heterosexual, so you know, many things, you know, they keep saying that. And then like how Padma says that, you know, it's not that, you know, if your child is sexually abused in the, in the childhood, then parents think, oh, maybe because of that, and those are the things. So we, I want to say that, be patient and listen to your children, you know, don't talk, talk about like being supportive, you know. If you don't understand and mainly, you know, at the first time when your children say that, you know, they are from the community, if you don't understand, don't react, you know, you can say that, okay, we'll let, let us discuss tomorrow, you know, about it. So you get that time, you know, that whatever time, you know, 24 hours or whatever, two days, three days. And then you know, you can get prepared, you know, parents, I'm talking with parents, you know, you can prepare yourself to what your child is going to talk about. You can meanwhile, if you have access to internet or, you know, wherever, if you, you can discuss with your, your husband or wife, you know. You have, and then, and you can discuss with each other and so you, you can be prepared about listening to your child, what they are going to say, you know. So and then when, when your child comes out, you know, actually, you know, if you don't understand, like, you know, if your child says that they are from the, they are, you know, trans man, you know, so you can ask them, you know, how to address your, because so many years, they have been accepting as he or she, you know, so that changes, you know. Because for child, it is, I am this, you know. So slowly, slowly, you can, the communication is most important. So these are the things I want to say that.
I can say, you know, I, I'm not like forward like Aruna or Lovina, they are immediately accepted their child. I will not say I didn't accept Harish, I did accept him but I was afraid of the immediate family, what the society will say. Because I am not open like them, so each mother is different. So in my case, it was that, my family, that's it. And let it, let us keep quiet about it, but he had other plans. He said, it's not me who wants to come out, it is the whole, in those days, people were not ready to come out. So I, I need to talk about it to let encourage other children to come out. So he said, no, you can't be selfish like this, you have to help people. I said, if that is more, you know, more happiness, why not I should be helping more? So that was my journey, so I will not say it was easy journey. For me, it was like, you know, slowly trying to come out of my shell and from my closet, actually. I just thought that I have accepted you, is that enough for you? He said, no, that's not the end of the world. I want to, you know, all child to be accepted, so I want you to come out and speak updates, come with me. So that's how my journey started. And I keep telling all the new mothers, you know, who are not too accepting, when I can do it, you can also do it. Like if they look at Aruna or they say, you will get, or, or, they will take, they will take it, I will, I will. I said, even I get to please try, I am today, I'm here speaking, so I can, you also be, tomorrow who knows, when you parent will be speaking and we don't want to speak, we want them. So let's see, probably in your next mother day, you will have more mothers, you know, speaking.
That, that's the goal, that's obviously the goal and the aim. But just, Padma, I'm out of curiosity, since, sorry Lovina ma'am, please go ahead.
No, no, please continue with Padma, I'll add later.
No, no, you can add, then I'll move to the next question.
So I just wanted to add that, you know, yes, as a parent, jhatsay accepted ya. But my journey began much earlier with a sibling, you know, a sibling who is openly from the community and I didn't come to know directly from them, you know. So I found out externally or from one way or the other, maybe from a WhatsApp, I can't even remember how it was. And I remember for about a week, I was very upset. I was upset that, you know, my sibling didn't tell me, didn't tell me, told other people but didn't tell me. And it made me feel like I was not trustworthy or how would I feel, were they scared of telling me? Were they scared of coming out to me, you know, what does that make me then, how does it make? Again, I had centered everything about me, you know, not so much about them. So it took me a while until it came to the point where, you know, it was about, it was eventually about love. We come from a very close-knit family and I said, listen, I can't give a damn. And began from there, so learning how to accept, learning how to interact, learning how to speak about them to someone else. You know, it was always about taking permission, can I tell them about you? Can I tell them about anything, you know, can I just refer to you? And then finally, finally, once then, so until now, I use the word day, but then it's my brother. So my brother said, listen, go, tell whoever you want, you know, so I don't have a problem. So with my brother, then it was much more comfortable. So by the time my child had come out to me, it was, I was already better prepared because I, I had spent many years in, you know, I still learned, I remember I have reached out to so many members of the community once to just explain to me definitions, you know, what does it mean really? I remember asking one member of the community who I was very, very close to and I just said, I said, listen, can I ask you a question? I just need to understand what you mean by the Q of it, what do you mean by queer, I don't understand it. And, and he explained it to me as best as he could. And it took me, you know, a couple of weeks and conversations till it got to the point that I did understand. So I think many of us go through it largely because of the conditioning we come from and also because of the fear, you know, maybe not ours but theirs. and also because of the fear, you know, maybe not ours but theirs. So if I had to say now as a parent, not every parent will have a rainbow sibling, right? But as a parent, how would I, what would I ask parents to do? One actively, listen, just listen. You don't really have answers because that's an experience you don't have if you're cis het. You know, if you are, if you are a cis het man, woman, whatever, you do not know the experience of someone from, uh, you know, a different sexuality or orientation, you do not know. So listen, but allow yourself that, you know, that, that time which is here and there, which is, you know, we, because it is a new situation. But I think what is more important is especially for contemporary parents today, you know, parents of today who are more open to having conversations, is to fill in the blanks of education. You don't have to wait to see, acha, after one month or maybe after one year or someday, maybe my child will, uh, you know, tell me something, maybe they won't, maybe your children will be cis het. But your education begins in normalizing these conversations at home. Normalizing conversations at home about sexuality, even if your children are not even anywhere, you know, have, going to have the discussion with you. Normalizing that makes you start normalizing the family as an ally maybe, you know. Uh, that means con- that these, that conversations about sexuality, conversations about gender, about orientation, just simply having them, not, not just say, ha, okay, you know, but, but when they happen, you have them with a straight face. And if you don't know how to have them, educate yourself. There are lots of people. I am an educator, right? So when, when people, it, there should be an openness to learn, a willingness to learn, saying, listen, I don't know, can someone say, explain to me so that one day, maybe when I need to have a conversation with my child, I know how to easily communicate. I don't need to bring biology and all these scientific terms. Simple heart-to-heart conversations, you know. I think, uh, that would be a good start for our parents, especially in Indian society. You know, let's start normalizing conversations so that it normalizes the acceptance also.
So what she said is right, you know. Uh, when I wanted to know other definitions, because when we went for the parents meet, I'm, so far I'm only gay and when I wanted a mate, lesbian, transgender and, uh, you know, bisexual. So my, my child told me about this definition, you know. So, uh, you know, our children are, uh, prestigious, you know. And, and one more thing I wanted to say that most importantly, nobody can choose their sexuality or gender identity.
Absolutely.
They are, parents need to understand that they are born like that, you know. So that's why, and, and moreover, till, uh, when your child comes out, they don't intend to hurt you. So that is more, in fact, they, they love you so much, that and they respect you so much. That is why they are scared of coming out to you, you know, if you don't accept them or, you know. So that, it's that point, you know, parent need to understand all this.
Yeah, I want to add that.
I think we've got some brilliant answers. Yeah. Yes, Padma ma'am.
I'd add that, you know, even sometimes, this generation, they feel, they come out, the parents and the parents should be immediately, think then, you just think about it, how long it takes you to understand yourself. It must have taken you years to understand that you are gay, to go to where you are. So give them that time. Time is a big factor, you know. Parents need to have their time to understand, to give them the time, give them, show them the videos and to show them other people, where children who are successful, tell them that we can be, uh, as them. And it will take time. I don't say it will happen overnight. Maybe in about two cases that you have it. But others, most of the parents are not supposed to come in. So it will take time. So give them that time. That is the main issue. Your, now, it is children are very intuitive. And they want, you know, today and tomorrow, see, look, Harish's mother is so accepting, why not my mother? That doesn't happen. And for me, level, it can be so many years. So say, give them some time. That's all we ask, all children to do, you know.
So I, uh, I had a very interesting question. Uh, you know, even if, when we look at this situation from, um, child's point of view, we al- always have an expectation that, uh, mothers, fathers, you know, all parents should be, you know, like Arunam ma'am and Louvina ma'am rightly pointed out, they need to listen to their child. They need to start, uh, taking into account their experiences because they know their sexuality and that's what they are trying to communicate. But, uh, some parents, you know, especially a lot of mothers, because our society is even today so focused on mothers raising their children and always judging mothers on how they raise their child. Uh, mothers generally face a dichotomy, you know, between accepting what their children are versus what the society will say, loo kya kainge, you know, the very common, uh, line that is used and is just thrown about. Uh, and that leads to a lot of, um, mental health challenges, you know, because, uh, mothers are very emotional and, uh, they have that responsibility, they have that burden, you know, a burden that they take on themselves or maybe society is imposing on them, which is not justified, but that is the reality today. Uh, how would you advise mothers to deal with this situation? Uh, and at the same time, care for their mental health in such situations? Yes, Aruna ma'am.
Yeah. You know what, uh, when, when we talk to the parents, you know, uh, mothers, you know, especially, yeah, you are right. Uh, most of the children come out to the, their mothers only first. Like my son also did, Padmas also, Louvina also. So it is mostly, and in our group also, we have more than hundred parents and we have most of the mothers only and few fa- fa- fathers, but they are very, very accepting. So, uh, yeah, so for mothers, you know, uh, uh, how we tell them, you know, ki, uh, for example, like, you know, for us, it should be, what is important, it should be like your, your child or because, you know, most of the time when child comes out, you know, parents think, oh, you are this, now what? You know, instead of listening to their own child, they start thinking, oh, what will I say to this person, that person? My extended family, my, uh, suppose, uh, uh, child has come out to mother, mother will first think, oh, what will I tell my husband? You know, my husband will say that, oh, because of your pampering, your, so much of love and this and that, you know. So, you know, they start thinking of all that. Society kya kai, bolo kya kainge, neighbors. So we tell them that, you know, ki, uh, it's not, i- i- it is your child, you know, you have to think about your child's health first, you know. Uh, for, for us, you know, uh, uh, me, my husband and my child is most important. And that is the, the family, that's all, you know. Uh, so there, there, there has to be the, uh, bonding between us first, you know. Uh, and then that trust, you know, between us. If, if, if we together are trusting each other and accepting each other, then that our mental health and everything is fine. And then, then you can face the world, you know, society or extended family or whoever says anything, you are ready, you know, to answer them. So, uh, so that is what we, we tell, uh, uh, mothers and parents, you know, ki, uh, they may, uh, most, mostly they have like, you know, uh, how will I tell my, my, I, I mean, if my, uh, I wanted to come out when my, my son came out, I immediately told my sister, my mother, you know. So it was not that key, I am not going to ask them, what do you feel, you know? I am going to tell them. They have to, yeah, the language what we use is important. You know, the way we tell, the way we tell them is important. You know, you are not going to ask for sympathy. You are going to just tell, it's, it is, it's your own child, you know. It's, it's just that it, it's different from your expectations or different from, uh, like so-called uh, majority, you can say or whatever, like heterosexual, different from, you know. And in fact, your child is unique, you know, you should say it pro- proudly, that so and so, you know, my, my, my child is not like every other person, you know, my child is different, you know. So important is that how you tell them now, how you convey the message, the language is important, you know. The way you tell them is very, very important. So, yeah, people will listen to you that only. They will not, uh, uh, start saying that, oh, this is wrong, that is wrong. You are not going to ask them. So that's my point. Padma or Louvina, you can add your thoughts.
I, I think that, uh, in my case, my son, when he came out to me, I was with him. Uh, I could find so many changes in him, you know. I be, walked with us at that time also, that point of time. But at the same time, when I was with him, he, I could see it, it was like a flower, you know, from the blue large. And that children, they are, you know, they become a blossom in front of where, if they have their parents support. I could see that change in him. So and I could see, I mean, I, I felt like, uh, you know, thought, uh, that in spite of going through so much of hardship, if that child can come out and speak so openly about it, so am I not a forward to behind, you know, hide behind the society, behind the family, staying here with it? So that day I paid up my note to help with all other, other people. I have to be with my family. And I could see the changes in him. And, uh, he is a, whatever he is today, he has his own, uh, being. I, I, and I always tell the children, don't be like a mabali and expect, expect your parents like. You have to, first thing, you have to be a good human being. If you are a good human being, parents will definitely accept you. And I find most of the children, at least the children whom I have come across, they are all such good, uh, so well-behaved, good children, that I feel ashamed to see in a heterosexual society. Definitely, I feel, I feel like one amount of them, you know, in their community. And we love to go to all events and be there, always, three, three sixty-five days, if we had an event, we'll definitely go and enjoy. That, that's really, really in your community, in the, in their community. So that thing should come, you know, the child should feel, no, I have to, it's not easy saying that, oh, Harish, yeah, hamikun nahi kya. He proved himself before he accepted it. So like that is true, that you can do something, stand on your feet, two, two people that, yes, we are loving you should. See how the community will, the parents, the people, like. It was easy. Even today, people talk in my back, even from the family, they talk. But at the same time, Harish is not, they are not, uh, we are so enduring to everybody that they just can't live, they are against it. So you have to come to that level before people can accept you. So my advice to all children are, that you be loving, see automatically, no parent will say, what? Is it a good idea for him, why us call him, let, let her in? No. So be accept, be, be a good human being, see how people will start loving you. What you think, how you raise your child to be a, first, the child is your child, whether he is heterosexual or homosexual, you raise them in a better manner, you see, fully that let it be. So acceptance comes not, you just start like a, you know, look for and say, oh, you accept me, no parent is good at it.
Right.
Very good. So first we have to be a good human being. That is one key factor in acceptance. Louvina?
Absolutely. In fact, I just, I just didn't mention this before, but when Louvina ma'am spoke about that incident she had with her brother, where she was offended for a week that her brother didn't come out to her. I just remembered that scene from Shishkreek. I don't know how many people have watched, watched Shishkreek. Where Patrick, the character Patrick, who, uh, uh, who is, uh, one of the main character David's husband, like he is to be husband, he is dating him at that point. Um, Patrick's parents accidentally come to know that he is gay from David's father. Uh, and, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Patrick's, uh, parents, uh, basically have a conversation in one scene where they say, uh, I mean, did he feel comfortable telling us about it? And we got to know from, you know, David's father that they were in a relationship. So I just remember that scene and I thought I should really say it out here because Shishkreek is one of those few shows that I have personally watched, which has a very, very light-hearted and a very, um, breezy, uh, you know, representation of the LGBTQI plus, because one of the creators is from the community. So that show has been lauded for its representation of the LGBTQI plus community in a very light-hearted and a very open manner, you know, which kind of ma- doesn't make it look like it, you know, something that is so different and needs to be treated, a topic that needs to be treated so differently. So coming back to our conversation, uh, Padma ma'am, you said that initially it was not very easy uh, as compared to Arunam ma'am and Louvina ma'am to accept Harish and, uh, his sexuality. So, you know, at that point of time in your, uh, at the time when Harish came out and at your, uh, you know, time, there wa- there weren't too many people you could reach out to about this. It's something that was a very personal experience for you. So I just wanted to understand, how did you break those shackles and those preconceived notions and finally come to accept?
No, I, I will not say it was difficult for me to accept, I had accept. But my acceptance, what I wanted to tell you, I have accepted you, I, I cannot like face the society or the, you know, we were in league, to face the family, for me, including my husband, you know, I, we had a talk. So like, uh, but he was very adamant, he was out of the media, he was out in the newspapers. But like, nobody connected him to, you know, our son. And, uh, I appeared in the newspaper, I came from the, in the media, then people started picking the dots. So that was the time when the VLD was in the group and they started teasing, you know, not in front of me, but behind my back, my younger son, why your mother has to go to school, Graham? It's okay, Harish goes, why she is busy? So all those things happened. So, but I, as I told you, you know, a day comes when you think your son's more important to you than everything else in the world. So I just, right. So it was an easy, I, and like how I, yeah, that Harish tricked me, I can say, it's not big, he needs, he should happen. And it's like, we just come out, though, we are tricked, we're out in front of him. And it is the meeting and as he, he is there, in the room. And this boy was talking on the microphone around and was talking, the, uh, and you were people, I saw him, came around and me and he's, I was like, you can imagine how I was so hurt and I'm sitting in the house, not visiting the, huh, uh, before my marriage, but not after. So how I'm not to people and this thing, and I, and suddenly I became the center stage. I take right in front of the camera and he says, he gave me the mic also and said, speak, want to speak? So my journey started like that and slowly, slowly I started coming out. At India with him, you know, NDTV, Tuber, something like that. So it was a slow journey, I wouldn't say, but I haven't taken a year, so in, in that passion, I said, it's the, it's the help for me, I wouldn't say. So say, what I face, even if it's a lot facing, it's nothing new. I'm hundred percent sure there are, at least, uh, ten out of hundred families must be, uh, open. But other ninety percent families, they must, they are facing difficulty, tell their parents, their siblings. There are so many in our group itself, who are not told their fathers, no grandparents, everything like that. So it's not so easy. Even for real, even for, 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 but I.
Yeah, it's a journey actually. It's such an important one also, you know, because, uh, I think, yeah, I, I think it's so important for parents and families to, to be that, that space of acceptance because, see, at the end of the day, after a few years, if they start when they are earlier, we'll, we, we raise our children till they are about, uh, eighteen or whatever, but in India, you know, our children stay with us for much longer. And then they start working, but once they go out into university and the, the world where they'll be working and earning, for them to feel that, that they belong where they are because they belong, uh, you know, in their own right, is something that we have to teach them and let them believe when they are in our families, when they are in our homes. What we, how we mold them to be, how we mold them to have that confidence and that feel, that ex- that experience of acceptance shouldn't be an added, you don't need a workshop to learn acceptance. You know, we accept our children because we love them. And that, that security that they get, when they take it along with them, then, you know, the, the greater hope is that one day we won't need, you know, uh, ERGs and all of these in corporate, because in the world, because everything, the belonging is just the state of how you are, you know. It's like one of our friends had said, in a, in a ga- in a gated community or in an apartment complex, you have people from different states and different places, all different, and you have no choice. You're paying the rent or you own the place and you live there because you belong there. Likewise, when you go different communities, shouldn't need that kind of, uh, you know, that additional extra thing. But right now we need it and, and our children need to, um, feel that. I, I'm, I'm reminded of this time very early on, uh, early on, when I think when my child was still questioning and, you know, trying to see what, what I'll, I was already very openly speaking about sexuality and gender and they knew, you know, the kind of activist, uh, you know, words that I was using. So when they asked me one day, what do you, how would you feel if? So when they asked me one day, what do you, how would you feel if I were, you know, or whatever? And I just sat with it for a little while and I said, I'd be fine. But then the next day I really sat with the question and I said, no, you know, I want to really give an honest answer, you know, am I really fine with it? Uh, or am I, you know, right now saying, ha, ha, I'm fine with it and then tomorrow if something comes up? So I wanted to be honest to my child and to myself and I felt, no, I am, I, I love my child regardless. And in fact, it's, uh, for anyone to find someone to love them, heterosexual or, you know, homosexual or bisexual or whatever it is. To find someone who loves you is a blessing, to find someone who loves you and is going to be with you for many years. Is a bigger blessing, why would I not want my child to be loved and have a life partner, you know? And then that, that whole conversation of love and intimacy and pleasure, you know, that's, that's another conversation. So I went up to them the next day and I said, I'm fine, I really am, you know, whatever it is and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have a problem. They had not yet come out to me at that point in time, but when they did, there was such a seamless flow, it was like, okay, you know, it is. So for the next birthday, I got them a cake which represented that. You know, I was thinking, what's special, what's, it was, you know, what do we do, how do we make this special and it just, you know, light bulb moment. Yeah, I said, let that be and they were so surprised, he said, really, that while we're singing happy birthday, they were crying. You know, and I use they here, not because that's a chosen pronoun, but because they are minors, right? And, uh, and I want to keep it neutral, but they are very firmly established in their identity and they do have specific pronouns. They is not their pronoun, but, uh, you know, so it, it is, it is just that, you know, we accept in different ways. We, we express our acceptance in different ways and I think we need to have that, you know, that at the end of the day. Who will they fall back on? You know, we're not going to suddenly stop cooking for them tomorrow. We love them, we, we love them, uh, regardless, today they'll, even if their grades fall or the grades raise or whatever, you still love them. So what's the big deal, you know, it's, it is just that, it is, the, the big deal is that you need to love them, that's it. I don't, and, and I also wanted to say that I'm a single mother, so the responsibility of, you know, making sure that my child feels safe. In my care, I am very disciplined, huh, I mean, discipline, they cannot compromise with, with, but discipline is the pure mother. That's, that's what mothers, they celebrate with that, right? Discipline is not the one that compromises, but the acceptance, the love, the, the, the tough love, the soft love, the crazy love, all of that. Is what I give unconditionally, sometimes conditionally, there are conditions also sometimes, but for the deeper part. I think I want to be there for my children, they, when they have a problem for anything, they should not think twice. That should I call mama, no, I should be on speed dial, they should know that whenever they need anything. They should without hesitation turn around and call me and they should know in their bones that I will be there, you know?
Absolutely.
And, and I think that's.
I think that's what a child wants the most.
Yeah, that is what when my, uh, Abhishek, when he, uh, when that conversation was going on, he couldn't come out, then I asked him, are you gay? And then when, uh, when I asked him, he came and hugged me and he asked me, are you ashamed of it? Are, are you angry? Uh, will you stop loving me? Those questions were there, you know, I said, no, oh God. Uh, in fact, I love you even more, you know, and I am there to protect you now. Because he had told me about section, that time section three seventy seven was there and I said, no, no, I, in fact, I'm there, you know? And, and he had told me that being gay means, being gay is called criminal, you know, uh, under section three seventy seven. Then I said, oh, now I want to say that how, who calls you criminal, you know? Uh, the real criminals are roaming around and if someone calls you criminal, I'm there and don't worry. You know, you live your life and that is true when, and when he got support from me that, that day very immediately, you know? And then he became so confident and, you know, he started coming out to so many people everywhere. And then, uh, to his father also, you know, he was scared to come out to me and then once he got my support after that. He told me, yeah, you know, mama, I will, uh, alone come, will come out to him and I will tell him everything and then, you know, it was like. You, you, you know, prak, he just started telling I'm this, that and, you know, I'm born like this. Uh, I mean, there is no prob- it's not a, your problem, my problem, mama's problem, I'm born like this, if you have any question, that kind of confidence I'm saying.
Yeah.
So once you.
Yeah, actually, that was the next question that, you know, uh, what are those positive changes? That you see when parents come out to their children and there is a level of acceptance and support. I'm sure no, not just psychologically, but even personality wise, they undergo some very positive changes. And some of which you would, maybe you would want to share with us, maybe in your experience, uh. Maybe personally or while running Svekar and talking to so many parents and seeing them accepting their children. What were those positive traits in the child that you may have witnessed? Psychologically and in terms of their personalities.
Yeah, so, uh, when Abhishek came out, he was only seventeen, so he was, uh, studying. And after that, like, uh, he got support from me, then he started coming out to, you know, whoever he met, you know, all the friends he came out. And, you know, so confidently because he knew back of the mind that he has the support from his mother, that's all, you know? After that, uh, then he's, uh, he completed his studies, then he, when he started job, you know, uh, uh, at the time of interview. When he was having interview, that time itself is, he told that I am gay. That is very important part of me, you know, that I'm gay, you know? So, uh, my, I will come along with that, you know, I'm gay and so you, I need to know right here that I am accepted. I, I, I have been accepted not only for the job, but I have accepted as a, you know, a homosexual person, you know? So I want, I need to know what are the policies in your company, those are the things he started asking there. That kind of confidence when, you know, I want to say that, everybody, Harish, uh, you know, uh, they are, they became so confident. Once they knew that they, we, they got support from, uh, parents, so, uh, he did that, you know, and, uh. Uh, and that was Hindustan times, he was, his first job was Hindustan time and he spoke over there. Then second job, then third job, everywhere, you know, uh, now it's his, uh, fourth job, you know? So everywhere, the first thing he said is this, that I am this and I, I need to know now. You know, whether I, uh, I will get support from, not only from the bosses, from the colleagues and everybody, you know? And then he, he wanted to check many things, you know, all those things and then, yeah, and then, uh, so, uh. So you know, he got support from all his colleagues and what and how really? Uh, he, he, he keeps getting support and, you know, they, all the. They will tell me that you, I mean, we are, are so proud to see you and your child, you know, like this, you know? So like that and then, you know, uh, now I want to say that, uh, this year in January. He's, uh, the, the job where he's working, you know, it's in Delhi, so he got ninety eight increase in his salary. Which is almost hundred two, twice the salary.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so what I want to say that, when children get support from their family and parents, you know, especially. They flourish like anything, you know, their mind is, you know, over there, they did, they, that is not, I mean, otherwise, you know? Back of the mind is always that, oh, I have not got support from parents, how will I come to my, uh, tell my parents, how will I get support from them? You know, that thing, you know, so the mental health always, you know, is tickling, you know? And once they get support, they don't, they, they are not bothered of society or anybody, you know? They, they can concentrate on what they are doing at that time, you know, so that's very important. If they are working, if they are studying, like Duvina is minor child, so, you know, they are, if they are studying, you know, wherever they are. Once they get support, they are into it, you know, so that's my point.
That level of stress, I feel, you know, the worry, the burden that comes, that, at every step, you know. How people would judge them and what would be their family reactions, all of that takes a backseat, you know? And that gives them clarity and that gives them confidence, much importance, right?
Yes, yeah, at the end of the day, they are coming home, that sense of home, you know, that wherever I go. I'll come home and I can just go to sleep, you know, I can just.
Re- peacefully.
You know, I have the peace that, okay, even if, so you know, the, the, the practical part, part of looking at it is. Even though we get support, society al- also messes up with our head a lot, you know? They also have all these negative experiences which are also true and they are valid because you cannot have already everybody in where we want them to be. So in, in the face of that, when they have that home where they can still come back and say, okay, all this happened. But I can go home and I can just be, you know, that there is no stress here, I mean, we have enough of stress with so many other things. And this is the, the one place that we can just be, you know, I think, uh, uh, the changes and I, and my child is very young. So I see the confidence that's there, the confidence in just, even if they have to say it and then they hear something like, huh, what is that or whatever? The way they actually express themselves, you know, it's, it's like, that's a no brainer, what's there, what's there for you so hard to understand in a way, you know? That, and also the appetite for risk, a little bit of risk taking, that they are willing to, to have. And not an opinion, but they can stand so strongly in their identity that they can stand up and say it proudly. You know, with that confidence, that sense of identity is very strong, so much so that it gives them that opportunity or that platform to take a little bit of risk. A little risk in saying, what will happen, you know, what is, what will happen, I have someone who's got my back, let me be who I am, you know? So little baby steps as younger adults or young children also, they learn to take when they know that they've got someone who's. Supporting them from behind, not for everything silly like how Padma said, you know? We teach them to be, you, you teach all your children, you to be, I mean, we're supposed to teach our children good values, values, but then, you know, when they have that confidence. They do make good choices, I mean, I am really proud, I've got three children and I'm really, really proud of the kind of human beings I'm raising. I, uh, you know, that, if something happens to me, I know that I have given at least three good people to the, to the, to society and said, here. This is my gift to you.
Absolutely.
Even I get to the society definitely, and I will say that Harish, he himself is a. You know, look at him and judge yourself, like how. Selfish he is and in spite of all those self-worthities, today he is trying, adding some, so he. So he also, like there was a college, college, there was a time when the, walls of the toilet, when they had graffiti in the walls of the toilet. Saying the obvious things. From that same college today is faculty professor, so can you imagine what level he has traveled? So these things can happen and it is in your hand that you should become a good person, a good human being. And overcome all the difficulties which come with it, so I'm positive thinking. Think a day will come when I can also reach that level and I think.
Yeah. I'll say that, uh, my child is, you know, uh, my child, never wants to live double life, you know? What he is now, he wants to say to, you know, whoever he meets, you know, I mean, not just, uh, oh, I want to say this, not like that. But once he knows that he is going to be with that person, uh, like colleagues working with them, you know? So he wants to always to be, uh, true to himself, that, that's the thing and that is the big change. After the, he got the support and like Louvina said, very rightly that, you know, uh, uh, they, they got a, uh. Loving, accepting home, you know, where, where they can, they're stress free, you know, they can be, that's true.
Great, so I'll probably move on to the last question of this segment and that is. What would be your advice, maybe from your personal experiences on how mothers, fathers? They can, uh, make their homes more inclusive and create a more inclusive environment. Where their children can flourish, especially whether as siblings and, and you're like staying in joint families. So how would a more inclusive environment be created so that children can, children who belong to the community can flourish?
Uh. Padma, you want to go?
I think Louvina is the best.
Okay, I would say communicate because inclusion otherwise becomes like a label. It becomes like, hey, we have to bring in inclusion, you know, it's like an added workshop for the family, you don't need that. When you communicate, when you communicate actively, you know, when you listen actively and you listen to respond. Or you listen to understand, actually, not listen to respond, you listen to understand, which is a lesson for me also, okay? Because I'm, I'm watchful that some children around will be saying, huh, she's on air and she's saying all this, but she doesn't always listen, we don't always listen, right? But it's work in progress, we need to listen, when it comes to things that matter, sometimes, I mean, if you're multitasking here and someone comes and says, you know, I want. Make for me pasta in the middle of all of this, then I don't make pasta, remember that, that's my son. I am making pasta in the middle of everything, but, uh, no, when it comes to these kind of things, right? We're talking about the community here, when it comes to things like this, we need to learn to communicate. And I, I personally believe that we need to develop these things for ourselves as adults, as parents, you know? Not because if I have a child who's from the community only, then I'll learn this, no, these are skills, these are skills that will help. What we learn in the offices, if we apply half of how we speak to our colleagues with our families, we won't have this problem only. But most of peo- most people think that our inclusion training, our D N I training is for how we work with our colleagues. And at home, they treat everyone like however they want, if we bring those skills of communicating so that we express. To, actually, you know what, we need to tell our family members more often that we love them, that we hug them, even if it feels like, hey, just simply we are doing this, but it's okay. You know, at least you bridge that gap a little bit, you know, be a little bit more of this and, um, I think communication is key. You need to be able to speak, you need to be able to, you know, have all sorts of conversations without any shame. At least in a home, you should be shameless in a way, you know, be shameless in your communication at home. And then you'll start removing that stigma of shame.
Yeah.
I, I think, uh, yeah, I think that's one nugget from it. Aruna Padma, over to you now.
Yeah, so for me, you know, uh, you know, many parents think that, uh, if your, if your child is, uh. Successful, you know, in their, uh, work or whatever, you know, they think that it is, it is them, you know, because of them. Uh, so it's not that, you know, it is because of your child only, you know, so the relationship should be, you know, that way, yeah, uh. I mean, uh, the atmosphere at home should be how, you know, not that, you know, when you're, when you're, uh, at the. Like dinner table, you know, the parents and child should look at each other and speak to each other. That kind of relation is there, that means, you know, that is inclusion, you know, that, that, that atmosphere creates, you know? That, uh, you know, that is, that is called like, you know, uh, uh, to be with each other, you know? So that, that is very important for me, so, so, uh, yeah, so how, how you will create that, you know? You know, you have, like, uh, Louvina said, that you have to be open for everything, you know? Like for, uh, when, when, uh, Abhishek told me about games, you know, he only explained to me many things, what is gay life? I, I, in fact, I started le- learning from the internet, but he told me so many, you know, he explained to me about lesbian. Uh, bisexual, including intersex, you know, about their genital and everything, you know? So, you know, parents, you know, should be open to listen to, uh, like she, like Louvina said, that, you know? You have to, you have to be open to learn the things, you know, you know, understand from them, you know? So when you have that kind of relation, you know, where, where you can discuss everything and anything, you know? So if, then that comes, you know, that, uh, inclusion and acceptance and that atmosphere autom- automatically is there, you know? So, it is, it is mainly on parents, you know, that, that kind of, uh, uh, you know, when. When, you know, I'll give one small example, you know, uh, when, uh, Abhishek, my child was at, uh, eight year old. So that time we had gone to have, uh, uh, you know, that roadside pav bhaji, you know, he was very small. And then we were, we had gone there and, uh, uh, you know, we ordered that and we, we sat there and we were discussing, you know, both of us. And he was making it, it was on that, uh, uh, kind of, you know, uh, what do you call this, uh? Uh, the pav bhaji wala was there and here.
Yeah, that.
Cart, yeah, cart, cart, you know, so, uh, and then we were discussing, we was talking about something, you know? And when he, uh, he came with the. And when he uh he came with the pav bhaji, you know, what he said uh to my son? Baba, you are very lucky. Kya aapko itni achi maam milhi hai? He said that, you know, you understood, nah?
Yeah.
Kya aapko itni achi maam milhi hai? So you know, uh and you know, we both of us looked at him. And then Abhishek, you know, after he went, he asked me, why he said that, you know? Why he didn't say that? You know, bache, you know, children are very cute and chubby, you know, they are small. So he asked me, why he never, never said that? Uh aapko itna, itne acha bacha mila hai? So I I told him that, you know, you know, you will not understand this now, you know, when we grow big, you know, you will understand what he said and why he said. Because children are always nice, you know, when they are children, they are always nice, they don't know anything, you know? It is really important to get those kind of parents who has, who can create that uh atmosphere, that space, you know, for children to be, you know, because parents, mostly parents, we have seen that, you know, they they want to behave like parent, you know? They want to behave like a father and mother and that kind of strictness and all that. You know, you have to have discipline. Discipline is one thing, you know, but you know, uh that dominating thing, you know, what I say, you must do that only. That is always a, uh that, you know, that stubbornness is there for many parents. So you know, uh it is really important what what kind of atmosphere parent create. Because parents are born first, you know, children are born later on. So you create the atmosphere and then children follow you, you know? And then, you know, there are many things, you know, to say, uh like many times, you know, parents will, uh I mean, when the families have more than one children, like I have only one child, so but I I know that, you know, they have like a daughter and son, you know? So they will try to create that, you know, oh, if you are, if you have a son, they will give different treatment and they will if a girl child will give different treatment, that is not correct, you know, as per me, you should, I mean, my, with my siblings, my parents gave the same treatment to all of us. So that is really important, you know? Absolutely, even, you know, girl child, you know, so there are many things uh with which, you know, you can create the, that kind of atmosphere and that is, that onus is on to parents. And children will automatically follow you, so that is.
That's right.
I have to say that, as Luvina said, the conversation should start at home, you have that. But it's not possible when you are three generations are staying together. Okay, my mother is accepted. Today she came for Harish's game, she said, okay, okay. She will not believe that, okay. And when I placed the ad, I had placed an ad in the newspaper looking for Samasun. And that we had mentioned that any person will do, but we had mentioned in the bracket, I prefer, and we have brought in us. My mother, that was my mother's, that he, any boy, it's okay, but it should be a boy. It should be a car, a year car. So that was jokingly written and I got quite a flake for all that, so some story. But we, I'm, a main purpose of place that was, there was a con, you know, conversation is that I don't know, that's fiction happen. Something is perfect and it's proud in purpose, because that ad became very viral and people started talking about it, I think, okay. But the main, I will say that conversation is very big and it's happening in India families today. But in a joint party, that sort of conversation is difficult to get, it's meeting. Because three generations are together and we can, uh if my mother is good to understand it, I think that's enough for me. And despite understanding, I find always Harish is, he's coming home for lunch, they are always eating out of the house. So she, she.
Right.
You know, I I just want to, actually, this is a shout out to my family, okay? I come from a brilliant, a wonderfully close knit family. Uh my my father died ten, eleven years ago now, it'll be eleven years in December. But we've had a family which has been open, our home has been open to people from all communities, we grew up in Kuwait. Um and they used to come in. As a family, however, now my mother is still there, my mother, my sister, my brother, we are close knit like anything. Yes, of course, the fights and arguments happen, but that's regardless, you know? But so closely knit, you know, therefore to support each other, you know, physically, emotionally, psychologically, they are there. And likewise, all of us, right from my mother to my siblings, are there for our our children, my children, my my niece, my nephew, for all of us, you know? That support, that that connection between each other is always there. My my children uh reach out to my sister, they reach out to my brother, they speak to him about so many things. And the openness and and the shamelessness is also there, okay? But but that's there and I think, you know, I think it was an atmosphere created by us, you know? And some conversations, we never thought that we would have with my mother when I was growing up. But as in adulthood, I was able to initiate those conversations with my mother as well. So I think those of us who have the skill set to bring those conversations with the older generation in our own ways, in simple ways, we do it. Of course, we are not in a very conservative family, of course, the extended family is, but we are able to. You know, just by seeing, just by seeing how they are, then the extended family also still accept us. And that's why I say a huge shout out to my family, because not just my immediate family, even my extended family is brilliantly accepting. Uh you know, it it's it's just the kind of people we are and and I would and apart from me saying what I'd like to have for other families, I wanted to acknowledge here, you know, that I do have a wonderful family for the sake of my children and for everyone else. So thank you all of you, thank you for being who you are.
I think we we've come to the end of this very, very wonderful, insightful and very warm uh conversation. I've had an absolute pleasure of hosting all you wonderful rainbow mothers here. And I would like to commend you uh for the work that you are doing through Swika. In fact, I would like to take this opportunity to uh uh you know, call and invite more and more parents and children from the community to be a part of this organization, be a a part of this community. In fact, those who have children from the L G B T Q Y community should uh join hands with these wonderful ladies and be allies more than anything else. So once again, thank you so much for taking your, taking your time out, taking some precious time out and uh joining us today. I hope you all have a fruitful uh Mother's Day.
Yeah, I want to, I wanted to say that we have, like, about our social media handles. We have Instagram, Instagram account, which is at Suikar the Rainbow Parents, the same name it is there. And then we have Facebook page also with same name, Suikar the Rainbow Parents. Then we have email ID also, suikar dot t rainbow parents at gmail dot com. So uh and you know, it's not even one year we started Instagram account. We started in June and we are likely to now complete one thousand likes, you know? One thousand followers are there, you know, already. So, yeah, and since we started Instagram account, Instagram handle, many, many children are reaching out to us, you know? After that, since lockdown, it is last year because of the lockdown and there were so many people were asking for starting for the Instagram account. So we started and then many, many parents came out after that, you know, many children came out. So so then parents and many parents joined our group, you know? So we have Facebook page, Instagram. And then because Facebook page is there, so through Messenger, you know, you can contact us. Then we have a Google form on Facebook page also and on Instagram also. So when whenever the parents want to join our group, they can join through that Google form. Or they can join whichever way by knowing like each other like this.
So we'll be posting the links for everyone's references as well uh in the chat section and the comment section. So please don't forget to check that out and join the group and of course, get in touch with these wonderful ladies on Facebook or Instagram, whatever, you know, is suitable and convenient. So thank you so much and stay tuned on our page and on the ICHA Support Foundation page. We're also gonna be posting a link to the ICHA Support Foundation, so all of you all can read a bit about our partner organization as well. Stay tuned on our pages and we'll be back with more interesting conversations for all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for calling, inviting us, actually.
I hope you have a great time, yeah.
And 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 since we are here talking to each other, Padma, happy Mother's Day, Luvina, happy Mother's Day.
Same to you, happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.